Good evening. Welcome to the special selectmen's meeting of March 31st, 2014. We all rise and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna start with Adam with the town administrator's report fiscal year 2015 budget development update.
So, good evening. I'm going to go through several documents that we're seeing impacted over the weekend, which was in response to the last couple of months and most specifically the last couple of weeks in terms of municipal services review. So the documents I'm gonna go over in order will be the two-page pro forma for the budget. Then I have a memo discussing format of questions for Proposition Two and a Half override. Then I have a spreadsheet matrix, which is a collection of items for discussion presented by the board members for items that would be on the override. Then I have a sample question of what the town's override and the summary would look like. I also have a memo on the tax impacts in terms of what the impact would be on the tax rate and also the average tax bill. And the last thing I want to touch on is just a draft capital request sheet. So for next week, April 7th, the week from tonight, the board will have to close the warrant and set any ballot questions. The following day, Tuesday, the 8th is the last day to notify the town clerk of any ballot questions. The warrant will be set. The public hearing for the finance committee is scheduled for Tuesday, week from tomorrow night on April 8th. I'm sorry, the public hearing is tomorrow night, April 1st. The following Tuesday, April 8th, the board, the finance committee will vote their recommendations on the warrant that you set the night before, okay? So with that, just gonna briefly summarize the budget. Not gonna go through this in detail as we've gone through this many times, but I just wanna give you where the new number is. The new deficit is at 1.1 million 33,000, so 1,133,000. The reason it changed from last week was at last week on Tuesday, the finance committee meeting, I was notified by Bay Path of the amount of bond premium that we'll be paying this year back to taxpayers, which is essentially a reduction from your debt exclusions. That was an $18,000 increase or decrease in revenues, if you will, which adds to the deficit. In addition to that, I added the $30,000 for the second fire training that we had talked about, adding another month's fire training. That is in there as well. And then I also reduced health insurance by approximately 20,000 to 25,000. I met with the insurance advisory committee last week, and as you know, we've received a 3.75% increase in our annual premium for health insurance, and we discussed with the insurance advisory commission, committee, increasing co-pays to get rid of that 3.75% to make it a zero. So that would allow us to reduce the insurance number. I don't have it finalized yet. We'd have to work with our employee groups to finalize that. We have a meeting again this Thursday, but if that's the case, it would be a reduction. And then our deficit is down to 1,133,109. So any questions in terms of revenues or expenses? I've been through this multiple times. The debt exclusion numbers haven't changed, except for the bond premium that I just mentioned. The levy limit hasn't changed since we began. The free cash, we talked about level funding that. We talked about the increase to local estimated receipts. We will have some transfers in terms of free cash for capital plan. If you so choose to do those, we'll go over those at the end of the night. And then in terms of expenses, I touched on some minor changes in the operating budget, but everything else has pretty much stayed the same. Water and sewer, and then the school assessments, a member assessment, a member of the Spencer's Brookfield, Bay Path, and then three out-of-district programs. There you go. So any questions on that in terms of the actual budget itself?
And does that leave us with the 595,000?
Correct.
Okay, that's still, that's intact.
Correct. So we have, so I'm gonna go through that next.
Okay. Just wanna make sure I'm following.
Good segue, John. So all set on the budget? Any questions on that? All right. So the next memorandum is entitled Override Discussion, dated March 27th, 2014, from myself to the board. So as you see in the first paragraph, the deficit is 1,133,109. This is a reminder to those folks at home, we had a structural deficit going into next year based on the fact that we have a $701,000 increase to this year's budget, which is essentially setting a benchmark for Spencer's Brookfield Regional School District. That 701,000 came at a point late in the game of this existing fiscal year where the board was unable to ask for additional revenue. So at that point, we used reserves primarily to offset that 701,000 moving into next year. We start with that, and then any increases in our own budget plus increases in school assessments minus the additional levy that we get through Prop Two and a Half gives us the 1,133,109 deficit. The board discussed, there was essentially a consensus at the last meeting, that there would be the amount for the override for the Spencer's Brookfield Regional School District would be the additional money over last year, which is 538, 482. And then the remaining amount for the town would be approximately 595,000, okay? So those are the amounts. If you're all set with that, I'll move into the next discussion, which is how to handle the structure of the questions in terms of breaking them out into separate or making them one override or combined. There was a request, I think, from one of the school committee members at last week's meeting to combine them into one. I gave you a memorandum. Some of the department heads and myself during the staff meeting last week brainstormed on some of the issues that come up and the advantages and disadvantages, and you have those in the memorandum as well. So with that, I'll answer any questions, but next week you will have to vote in terms of what the questions will be. I gave you a couple of samples here, but I think you should, in order to move forward tonight, at least have that conversation, put that to a closure, whether or not you're going to combine them into one question or into two.
You need to know that right now?
I-
I can say two.
Okay.
I agree.
Two.
Two. There you go. Two questions.
Okay.
And before we move into those two amounts, just a question on procedure. Are there still, is there still an opportunity to make cuts in the operating budget that would in fact reduce the override? And how would that happen?
Yeah, until you, until it starts time that you close the warrant.
So I guess that's a question for the chair. Is that the subject for our discussion tonight, Gary?
I think everything's open for discussion tonight.
Through the chair, I mean, I was hoping that discussion would also occur. My list was more of a review, what, at trimming the budget as opposed to necessarily that's the override?
Okay.
Well, here's my thought, is that, and just you guys choose as you may. Once you take it away, I think it's probably gonna be an item that's gone forever, right? Because you're asked, because it's not something that you, in your mind, are saying, "I, we need this as a town to operate, and we're gonna need this moving forward." You know, understand what's like, that's my opinion. And once it's gone, it's probably something that's gone, right? And that we don't need to use, and that's exactly what we, going back to the beginning of this discussion. We went through all the services, so if there's a service that you don't think that you, we don't gonna do anymore because it's not essential and it would help us reduce the override amount, great. If you say, you know, "I'm gonna reduce a certain position because I just don't think it's needed anymore," and it's not a position that's not gonna be on the override, that position's gone, right? You're saying you don't need that position to do the service, right? If you're saying that, you know, in a certain department, they spend $25,000 on a certain software every year, whatever, and you wanna eliminate that anymore, and you don't include that on the override, you're basically saying, "We don't need that $25,000 software to operate the service anymore." So I'll leave you with that, and then we'll have the back-and-forth discussion, and there's staff here tonight, and we can have some back-and-forth in terms of whether or not, if you think there's something that's not in the budget that's not needed anymore, staff is here and they can provide a response to that, and I'll do the same.
So we'll leave that to be opened up as we progress through this.
Okay.
So, so we have the two questions coming down. So the next thing I have is this matrix, which staff has had a chance to see it as well. So for those at home, it looks something like this. And what we tried to do is, Adam has a column, and then John gave me a list of columns, Gary, Tony, and Donnie and Bo sat down together in my office and kind of had some discussion in terms of things. The items that are common in color going across are things that are consistent throughout all five columns. So, for example, the fire department training, it showed up on everyone's list. It's read all the way across. There are then items on the bottom, which they may be in three of the five, four of the five, but not in all. And then those are things that maybe after you have this discussion about the consensus, those are things that you then add back, or, you know, we wanna have a discussion on consensus things and take those off as well. You can have that discussion. So that's essentially how the chart was created, okay? So however you'd like to proceed, you can go through each individual column, and you can discuss the items and why you thought those should be items that are on the override. What I tried to do, and what we did with staff, we spent a couple hours last week, and what we did is we started with a service in each department. We didn't go to a number and say, "Okay, I need 10,000. I need 50,000. I need 100,000 to get us up to 600,000." What we said was, what services are things that we should be discussing that should be on override or not? We should ask for more money because these services need more money to run them, and maybe other services you just can't touch. You know, I can't, you know, I gotta have at least a minimum one building inspector. I have to at least a minimum a town clerk, an assessor, and everyone has certain functions. And then we can discuss about the service and how we provide the service in terms of, if we make change to the service, reductions in the service, what would then be the impact in terms of how it's staffed, how it's programmed, how we operate it? What could you physically actually do with hours that are available in a business week? Do you have to reduce hours as we reduce the service? And then at the end, then we went to, okay, by reducing that service, that means X thousands of dollars and X number of people. We didn't go through each department and say, "I need 10,000 from the assessors. I need 10% across the board. I need 30,000 from the police department. I need 5,000 from the fire department." We went with service, and that's what this has always been. This has always been a service-driven task in terms of what are we gonna do as a town? And what are we not gonna do? And then what things do we feel we essentially need to do, but we need more money to do it? Okay, so that's how I put my list. So if you look at the top left, I'll go through mine real quick, and then we can talk about everyone else's. So essentially gray, this is not in any particular order. This is basically in order of the number that we have by accounts, and that's, I believe. So the top left was, again, talking about if you wanna make reductions in terms of general government and what the impact would be to closing town hall two days a week, saying, "We're not gonna be able to offer that service four days a week anymore. We're gonna go back to a part-time service. We still have essential functions that need to be addressed, but we're gonna reduce it such that it's only done on a part-time basis. What would that mean?" And that essentially means everybody's support staff would be reduced. We would have department heads work four days a week, two days open to the public, two days closed to the public. The work of the department head still needs to get done. They lack the ability to have support, so the window time is affected, the customer time is affected, the time responding on the phone is affected, and obviously that means major reductions in terms of staff. Police overtime, we targeted that one in discussions because one of the things that we felt was, it's discretionary, was what you do in terms of events. You know, events are obviously great to have in town, but if we have, this came out of that line, Adam, so parades, you know, doing different things that are certainly community-oriented, but they're not essential in terms of, you know, I get a 911 call, there's someone inside my house, okay? So we reduce that. That wouldn't be one of those that would affect shift overlapping and, you know, covering someone while they're sick to maintain, maintain the staff level of the service that you're expected to cover. This is something above and beyond that, okay? Fire department, we've talked, we talked about it. If we're gonna reduce the service, one of the services we're gonna reduce is we're not gonna be open to the public. You're only gonna be able to get a permit online or when the fire chief is there. Knowing, as you saw, when the fire chief was here, spends a lot of his time outside of the building doing inspections, professional development, setting up training, being a part of District Seven, and all the other things that he does, going to staff meetings, doing budgets and all those. It's not gonna be a service that we're gonna be open to the public anymore, okay? If you have a question for the fire chief, you call, you leave a message, we'll get back to you when you can. Training I talked about. Utilities, facilities, and highways, we went through the benefits that we have of different positions. One of them is in the engineering aid. We talked about, you know, what's more important in terms of a service? Is it plowing the roads? Is it fixing, is it cleaning a catch basin? This is something that we absolutely use every year, and it's a non-benefit position, and again, it's nine bucks an hour, I think, but it frees up Steve to do other things that he can do with his time. But, you know, that's one of the things that we felt that was, in terms of a service, that we would put on the override. Streetlights, I could put that on there myself, and we can have this debate whether or not it affects public safety. It definitely does, but at the end of the day, you know, the top left, if you're going down to an even more minimum than you already are, and then in terms of having police on the streets and plowing the roads, which people expect you to do, I targeted this item before I targeted police officers, before I targeted highway department officials, because I felt that that was, you know, more essential. And that's just my opinion, and we can have that debate. Board of Health, override coordinator, it's, again, it's a discretionary thing. It's something that we do. We've done it through the school program. It's certainly a beneficial program, but in times like these, it's something that is absolutely essential, and when you start looking at this versus maybe another service that we're doing, public safety, public works, or other library hours or whatever, that's, that's one of the things I put on there. Council on Aging, I put on Maple Street, Maple Street Senior Center. Absolutely would love to have it. I know this board wants to have it, but again, it was an easy target at this point in time because it's not something that's already being done. It's there for the taking if the people support it, but it was certainly easier putting this up there rather than taking physicians away from another department such as police or highway. Senior Work Program, it's not essential. It's not a core service. It's discretionary. It's absolutely beneficial to the people that are involved in it. It's absolutely beneficial to the department heads that utilize those folks. However, again, times like these, it's not essential. It's not offered in every community. You know, do I want to answer 911 or am I gonna offer a special tax break? You know, those are the types of things that we're looking at. Reducing hours in the library, we went down to the minimum that we would be able to maintain our certification. Certification allows you, as you saw from the library director, allows you to access all of the other libraries in the state of Massachusetts. Without certification, you don't. So then you become just a neighborhood library, right? You lose other programs and other things when you go from 40 to 32 hours. But we go below 32 hours, again, we lose certification. That was kind of the fine line. Reducing 32 hours, reducing to 32 hours definitely means the loss of staff, the loss of programs. We're not gonna be offering the same child programs that we have now. We're not gonna be helping people fill out taxes anymore because we're gonna be manning the station where people can rent books, and that's it, okay? Parks and Rec expenses, pretty much wiping out that whole department. That we're not going to offer swim lessons. It's absolutely great, beneficial. People in this room, I know, went there, did it. But again, in terms of the prioritization of services that we offer as a community, is Parks and Rec, is open to having a lifeguard on duty at the beach. There's plenty of beaches around, different lakes around towns. I know, I fish a lot of lakes around, and there's not a lifeguard at those beaches every day, eight, seven to five or whatever. So that'd be the other thing you get rid of. We get rid of lifeguards at the beach, swim at your own risk, okay? And then all the Parks and Rec expenses in terms of taking care of the parks. Love to have them. Love the parks, but, you know, again, public safety, you know, there is a prioritization in terms of services. I think everybody in here knows that. At what levels can you go to? So Parks and Rec, that's a pretty wide gamut there when you go from community to community in terms of what they offer and what they don't. People want Parks and Rec programs, they wanna do it. In this town, my suggestion is an override for it. So that, John, do you wanna go through yours?
Well, what I-
Or do you wanna go back to mine?
Well, I would just like to point out that the reason why my total at the bottom is about $150,000 short of the others is because, like Tony, it sounds like Tony has included some of these ideas in his list, but my thought was to, was to delete approximately 150,000, 140,000, 150,000 to get the override under, under 500,000.
But before you go into that, and I had this discussion when you weren't here last week, and looking at what you had on your list. The things that you had on your list were primarily the things that we cut in the fall. And I think what people need to understand, those things that were cut in the fall, they're not discretionary. Those are things that were cut with the hopes that we wouldn't have to go back in May and put them back in the budget, or we were gonna risk it. One of them was firefighter salaries. You're cutting, we cut $5,000 on firefighter salaries with the hope that we don't have a lot of fires, and then we're gonna be able to get through the end of the year without that money.
Well, that wasn't on my list, but I see what you're saying.
For example, out of the 178 that we had in the fall, between that, $2,000 in town council money, that's hoping that you don't have as much litigation. The $5,800 in computers, we basically said we're not gonna buy any new computers this year. So my point is, if you wanna put those things in here to reduce the budget, we need those things. And I'm gonna ask you in May to take free cash and buy those things or put money back in the budget because I need them.
What's your list, John?
Oh, that's, of that I would delete, okay? It's, I redid it so I can, I can give you, I've got some- And I'm glad department heads are here because I'd be happy to, you know, some of these are softer than others, but I guess it gets back to what, you know, what our purpose was in this series of sessions reviewing municipal services, and I didn't think it was just a matter of identifying things that were gonna move to an override category. I thought it was really taking a look and seeing where we could go forward with, you know, with some cuts, you know? This is not, I did not expect that we're gonna find $600,000 or the four, you know, five or 600,000, which we were, had in mind as we were thinking about an override heading into this process. But I do feel like it's a, it's a show of good faith to the, you know, to the voters and to the residents to say that, say with the, you know, with a budget of this size that we can find, you know, 1% to 2% in outright cuts that we can learn to live with, go forward without. So, and then what I looked at on the override list, and the reason why mine is, my override total is around 450,000, is because, you know, these are the things that, these would be things that would be, that would be more convenient, would be nice to have. I think it's, I still see that, see if the override didn't pass, this, the way I approached it, if an override didn't pass, what would we still have as a town? It would, it would be inconvenient. It would, it would hurt. It would show, but we'd still be covering our responsibilities and essential services. So, so, you know, just as a, as a quick total, if you wanna look at that list and say, these are, these are numbers I-
Is this a new list? Cause I don't know if I'm here.
I'd share with John.
No, I, I think I thought I had it.
Some of your, some of your things are here, John, and here. So you can't count it twice.
Right, cause some dropped.
Well, this is, I did not, you know, change my, what I was-
So we can't add this number to that to get the six. Doesn't work that way.
Correct.
Right. Because you doubled up on some things.
Well, I-
Well, this is what he said, he cut, but he-
Do you wanna go through each one?
Yeah, you're right.
Oh, so do this, and then, okay.
I think Johnny's right. If you cut these things, the number's not gonna be 454. It's gonna be 300 and something. But let's go through each one, because there's some that aren't on the list.
Because what I did is I started with the 595. The numbers I was working with, I prepared my original list down, was a smaller deficit that's since been revised, so.
It was 538 or something like that.
Yes, it's, 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 so, so just for the purposes, I'm sorry, I don't have enough for everybody, but I was, $2,000 for the select board, these are cuts, $5,000 in reserve, $65,000 stormwater, 5,000 Otis, and I, when it comes to some of the departments, I'm not sure of the, of the most strategic place, the wisest place to make the, to make the cuts, but I was looking at overall budgets, thinking, you know, hoping for efficiencies here. $30,000 overall administration, finance, and clerk, 10,000 for an engineering aid, 15,000 highway consulting, 5,000 police overtime, and 10,000 library staff.
All right, so let's go, if we could, just to, back to the matrix. So the highway consulting, you had that on here, 15,000, to get to 454.
Yeah, this, this list really doesn't, since this was made up with the original, with a different total in mind, this list really doesn't apply. What I thought we were gonna be doing is looking at, you know, starting out by looking at what, what, what the total override we should-
Which is fine. I'm, I think we're in that discussion. So the question is, in that 15,000, I think-
So I have moved some things from my, from my override list, you know, to my cut list because I really wanna get this under 500,000.
Okay, well, I guess let me ask that question, John. The goal that you mentioned for 500,000, is it because of services, or is it that you feel like, I'm just wondering how you're getting, is your end justify your means, or if I had it backward, my means justify my end, but it seems like you have a goal of just getting to a certain number rather than saying, "Let's go through the services."
I'm trying to, to find significant cuts, and I want people watching to know that this, that this budget, you know, could handle a 1% to 2% cut going, going forward. And I'm, 500,000 is a, is a number that I think means something to people. You get about 500,000, and I, I know it's, it's approaching it on a gut level, you know, and then I will, and then I will wait to see, you know, where the cuts, where the cuts fall, where the balances are. And that was the, you know, the final discussion I thought we were gonna have, but I, I did think that there's a, as meeting the expectations of the voters, I felt it was, it was, I was not doing my job to simply come in and move items into an override column.
Okay, so I guess my question is then, what would be, I guess, rather than, I guess in terms of what would be in your 500, I guess, is, I guess is where we need to get to, but I guess we all need to do that in terms of whatever number we have. My, and then back to this 15,000 on highway consulting, is this something that, so you don't, so you would recommend that not be on the, on the override list?
Right.
Okay, so I'm looking at your number above. I'm gonna, I'm gonna wanna add these things up on the left. You have a total of 454. So if I take away that 15, now you're down to 439, correct?
Yes. But as I said, this, this, I was working with a smaller total to begin with.
So should I start with, I'm trying to just figure out how to do your, your column. Should I start at the 595 and then take these numbers away to get to, so right now, you wanna go 595 minus 147?
That's right.
Which is 438?
Through the chair, maybe, now that he's told you it's 595 and you're working back to your goal, so you're looking at 95,000, you'd like to, at this, you wanna get under 500. Are these cuts that you just are adamant about that you think, or was it, you thought there was area in the budget? Is there something here that gave you a judder when you, when you wrote it down that you could reconsider and, so this gentleman can work back to the-
Let me stop there. Before, let's say there's no override at all. There's no override at all. We have exactly the right amount of revenue. What, you think that we should be cutting these items? So do you, I mean, I'm just questioning, so-
No, no. I'm really trying to work with what we-
See, that's why I'm trying to make my point. If you feel that this, these, the dollar amounts are important to provide the service that we need to provide, I guess, I'm just, I don't mean any disrespect by questioning your method, John, but I just, I feel, and I understand you have a goal of getting to a certain number, but for, for us, I look at $65,000 in stormwater. I don't have that money in there. We're getting fined by EPA. That's a problem. You know, it's not something I can get rid of.
But it's not, it's not the total. It leaves us with 25,000, which I thought was a good face start on those obligations.
And I think, and maybe it's, you know, maybe we're not doing a good job to present it, but there's other towns that are spending $200,000 to $300,000 a year to tackle stormwater. And we try to come up with a reasonable number. Steve and his staff are doing a lot of the work during the day. This money needs to be high, used for higher consultants and other things that we can't do ourselves. And if we don't do them, we're getting fined. And I don't wanna be sitting here two years from now saying-
I just wanna clear-
Why didn't we know this was coming?
And, and we do know it's coming, but, John, let me just back up.
Sure.
I think stormwater was 65,000. Looks like he's saying, "Give 25 of the 65."
I was using, I was using 25 of the 90.
I'm just trying to figure where the bottom numbers are dropping in here.
Is it easier just to, I wonder if it's easier just to go through the consensus, everybody's consensus?
Start from the top, yeah.
And just say, "These are numbers that," rather than going backwards, let's start building up?
Okay, that's, that's fine.
So go to consensus. So I'm looking in the red all the way across. Everybody has fire department training, right?
Right.
Add it, yes.
So there's, you know, so there's 30. And one of the things that I tried to do was, one of the sheets I have is a sample question for the town, and I lumped in all the different dollar notes, thinking that this would be a place to go. But the 30,000 is on there.
Yep.
The 90,000 for the Maple Street?
Everybody got that across.
Mine was 100,000, and we have 10,000 or whatever in the budget, so I, I just want that presented, so.
Yeah.
Whatever the number is.
He presented 100.
Right, it could be, you know what I mean?
We need 10, if we're gonna stay where we are, that 10 is for fishing game. That's why- We need ten, if we're gonna stay where we are, that ten is for fishing game, that's why it's ninety instead of a hundred.
Right.
So you understand, I did ninety?
Yeah, I understand.
Are you okay with ninety?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying.
So if we went with ninety, the override failed, they're still at fishing game, as long as you can do another lease and stay there, okay?
Looks like we all had the fluoride too, right? You add that as you go in?
Yep. So the fluoride coordinator.
Yep.
Um. Um, Parks and Recreation, we had different amounts, I had pretty much everything, sixty-one. Some of you guys had thirty-five, some of you had forty-seven.
Right.
So, and let me go, let me just bring up the budget item so we can.
See it in front of you.
Um, I think it just had the summary in here, but.
It's on towards the last page, you showed that.
So I left five thousand dollars just for, it's basically for, you know, mowing, and, you know, uh, or, you know, minor, minor, minor repairs, I left five grand in there. But basically wiping out all the salaries and wages.
Yep.
Okay? That was, so basically no lifeguards, no waterfront director, no, um, no swim lessons, that means that program, okay? That's, that's what our staff does, we don't have any other staff for that.
My analysis of, of, just using the, the chair, Gary, um, I would like to see, lifeguards remain, I, I really think it's a public safety issue, like, because the people are gonna use the beach, kids are gonna swim there, and I'm, I'm trying to anticipate, um.
No, it's gonna be closed, right?
Right.
Luthell Park will be closed.
Well, it's open now, so you go through it, but there's no, there'd be no lifeguards on duty, no, and so here's, here's.
You can't keep it open if there's no lifeguard, so we close it, right?
No, we have it, uh, we have it open when there's no lifeguards there, it's swim at your own risk. So there will not be, I think it's seven to, uh, I think it's like eight to seven at night or ten to seven.
Is the town's liability policy okay with it?
As long as we have a swim at your own risk, but there's no, so here's what we have, we have parking attendants that check to see people come in and making sure they're residents of Town of Spencer. So there will be no control of who's using the park, okay? Then there'll be no lifeguards on duty, no water safety instructors and waterfront director, and those are used to basically run the swim lesson program. Okay? Now again, then, I just think about, I had six hundred thousand dollars of stuff and this was one of them. If you put money in here and you wanna get down to four hundred, you know, you don't wanna get to, you're, you're going the wrong way, you're adding things back in the budget, you know what I'm saying?
Well, but it's, but it's about a total, Alex, you know, there are other areas, there's, there's, there's a give and take here.
And, and again, let's, let's continue where we're, we're pretty close.
So I guess what, if.
And, what?
Yep.
Like he said, no disrespect, John, but you got four fifty, we gotta get six hundred, buddy, you know?
Well, even if we are five hundred.
We gotta pump these numbers up, we can't, we can't add stuff in, it's not gonna happen.
Even if five hundred was the number, John, but, you know, you're, you're adding number back in, it's, it's, it's counterproductive.
A- and everything we're saying is true, eh, but I, I think right now i- is it's important that we get through all the stuff that we, we say the what ifs, and that's what we did, we asked every department, had to come in and defend what they have. Everything on here, eh, eh, I can't see where we're saying, hey, we're gonna eliminate this, we don't think it's a need, I think we're beyond that point. Now how do we get to where we're going?
And they need, either way, John, if we cut this stuff and it's, the total's gonna be five ninety-seven, whatever we do, you know what I mean?
Right, I, I understand, to be cut.
That, that was my thing, is that if you keep this in here, then you're going to another department over and above what I've, I've already proposed, which is, so that's, just keep that in mind as you're doing, so, which is fine, we'll, we'll get there however we get there. So what do, what do we wanna do with this department?
So I think the only, eh, and I think that Bo Donnie.
I'm good with the sixty-one.
I had the same, uh, you had the same, and Tony, you were at forty-seven, six.
Well, the reason I, I, I put the minimum in there, again, I was kinda thinking cuts and.
And trying to keep going.
And override, and in one of the, the, the superintendent approved versions had less maintenance in it than.
Well, originally, they proposed, they're saying they need twenty-eight thousand dollars to op- to operate maintenance. Such thing as like Powder Mill Park, fertilizing, we have to rent the porta potty down there, playground equipment, among the slant repairs, you know, those types of things, um, McGarrett Park, same thing, they, they have a lawnmower down there, it's fuel, oil, you know, fertilizer, loam, they, they, they line, they use it to line, um, paint, use it to line, line the lines, so.
It all, maybe I had the numbers incorrectly, you know, one column or another, I am okay with the, the building of that area.
Alright, so I'm just gonna change that so we know where we're heading with this.
We're gonna have one common thing, so yes, I'm, I'm okay with it, my assumption was, worst case scenario, everything goes away.
Right, and what I did was, I, I, the number is sixty-six, I believe, or sixty-five, and I went to sixty-one, I kept five grand in there, basically a coin.
Because you're gonna have to do something at some point.
And I just mentioned, I, I, I'm in agreement with Bo and, and Don, if, if, if the, if the, if, if the, it's, it, the, the lifeguards went, we should chain the front, we should chain the back, and, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So.
From library.
So let's, let's go back, so sixty, is six, cause I'm running the total here, sixty-one the number.
Yep.
Yeah, sixty-one.
Well, I mean, you want, cause John, you, how do you, you guys want, wanna take a vote on this item, how do you feel about the sixty-one?
So your sixty-one comes from.
Thirty-eight salary and the twenty-seven.
But that adds, but that adds, that comes to sixty-six, you're saying when you, there's five in there for.
Correct.
We're gonna leave five in there for just little things that.
Okay, I just want, just, just following the numbers.
Let's say the chain that we have chained up the park.
Well, you still gotta mow the grass.
Yeah, somebody steals it. Yeah. Put another chain up.
Right.
I just wanna make sure I, I must do the math.
Absolutely.
You know, um.
So I, by the sixty-one the number, we're gonna run.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where we're going with that.
Well, hopefully you can run that, I, it's just, I, I really, I feel like it's a, it's a mutation of safety.
Alright, so after one, we're up at one eighty-five. Okay?
Yep.
Reduction in hours to the library from forty hours to thirty-two. Uh, the ninety-two thousand I have comes from meeting with the library director and the other staff in the department, which would be some reduction in expenses and utilities based on the fact that it's not open as much with eight hours, reducing some of the programs that are offered and then eliminating staff.
Now, Adam, does that include, um, just the three or is that one with like a, um, not one by time to fill in on the days, you know?
We have, we would, had three full timers.
Yep.
I believe it was, is it here, I think it was two part timers, two part timers.
And that was a ninety-two?
Okay.
So what it was doing was eliminate, you know, so it kept two positions at, say, fourteen thousand and eliminated all of these. So it eliminated one, two, three, four, five, six, seven people.
So the ninety-two is a real number?
Five, six, seven people. Seven people, and then what we did is we came down to utilities, for example, electricity and gas and, and, you know, you know, drop, say, five thousand there.
Yeah.
Um, and then same thing down here, we have programs, we cut, we cut like this, this land's library programs, that kind of stuff. Reduce the amount of, say, workshops that we need because we don't have the same staff, there wouldn't be professional development as much when you reduce your staff.
Two would be the figure.
So ninety-two is the number that we carried, so ninety-seven, you gotta remember, when you, when we do that, we also reduce this number here. So in order to get the grant from state aid for library books, uh, I'm sorry, for, a grant from the li- from the state for your library, you need to carry a certain amount of book budget, and we kept that, it's sixteen percent of the, the total budget. So when we reduce the budget by a certain dollar amount, we also reduce this, okay? So between the two forty-three and the fifty-nine is three oh three, so the four hundred thousand, we're down to, say, three oh three. So it's a twenty, twenty-five percent cut in that department.
From Mary's presentation, you know, what, what was sticking in my mind was, was the forty, so, but that was required for st- state grant standards? So what's happening going from forty to thirty-two?
Well, the s- the thirty-two would allow us to maintain certification.
Okay, I'm, I'm just.
Anything, anything.
So if you go below thirty-two hours, you lose certification, so right now you have access to six million items, I think it was, because you're a member of the state regional library system. So you, you maintain a certain number hours, um, you go below that, then you, you are, you don't, if I get a library card there, I can only use it to spend to library. I can't walk into Walt Ham's library and use it.
So what was the significance of the forty then in, in the?
The four, the going to thirty-two, forty hours to thirty-two hours was getting to the point where we, as a minimum, kept our certification and allowed people access to all of the other libraries. And obviously the programs that are offered here. So that's why we're, we're not going from forty hours to twenty-four, we're going from forty to thirty-two, that keeps us at the bare minimum for certification. And then what we tried to say is, okay, again, service level, we start with the service. What do we need in order to maintain certification to allow residents access to six million items and three hundred and fifty-one libraries or whatever the number is probably, less or more? Um, so, but in order to do that, what's the minimum service that we could provide as a community, it's thirty-two hours. Okay, so thirty-two hours, how does that affect the staffing levels? Okay, well, we would eliminate fifty people, okay, well now how does that affect the expense budget? We would eliminate certain amount of expenses because of utilities and also because of programs. Money that's used to give to staff to help them provide a program is no longer needed because that staff person isn't there anymore. That's, so that's why we got the forty thirty-two. Okay? That's ninety. Two seventy-seven.
Two seventy-seven is right.
Two seventy-seven.
Now, the one ten you had, what was that included? I, I just curious.
I don't think that was, I, I don't think that was a two by timers.
Yeah, I think that was one.
Okay.
But I di- I couldn't remember what Mary had said.
Okay.
Parks and Rec Library, okay, the other one we had, as primarily as a consensus, was the fifteen thousand for the senior work program, fifteen thousand. Is that still a consensus?
Yep.
Something that's great to offer to residents?
Yep.
And if we're gonna do it, we're gonna ask for more money to do it, and it provides a benefit to those people in the boroughs, okay?
So where that comes out of the overlay, we would've had to take that anyways, right? If it showed the general side.
Shoot, you're right, it does come out of overlay.
Cause that's out of overlay, that's really not.
Not, you're right, you're absolutely right, um.
I'm just curious, I don't wanna.
Well, what we've done, what we've been doing is.
If it was in our side, we could kill it, I think, right?
That is correct, we should take that off.
I'm sorry, could you explain that?
Refund certain tax programs in our budget with overlay surplus, overlay surplus, if I go back to the, the budget. Um. In the, in the budget, what we do is for expenses, we carry a hundred and ten thousand dollars approximately this year, in some years it's slightly more, slightly less. And what that does, it offsets any reduction in this tax levy limit number through someone applying for abatement. So eleven million four hundred and eight thousand plus the new growth, eleven point eight down to twelve point six. That's saying that the number in your tax bill, or Joe Smith's tax bill, is gonna stay that way throughout the whole year, for every tax bill that we have in town. If Joe Smith comes in and says, I want a hundred dollar break, and he gets it, comes out of that hundred and ten thousand. That way we're able to maintain the full amount of tax levy that we started with, projected. Any surplus left in that one hundred and ten thousand dollars goes into an account specifically for the assessors, board of assessors to oversee. And they can build it up. What we do is we use that every year to apply to programs that are tax related, so it's coming back into the budget. For example, we use it to fund tax title, we use it to fund the senior tax work program. And this year we, we're going to use it to fund the fir- or, we've done it in years past, but we're gonna start funding, in years past, we've taken the triangle evaluation, they do a rebound over a three-year period, and we've done it in the past where it's been ninety grand over three years. So we wait three years, and then we take ninety grand out of that surplus account. Well, we know we have to do this every three years, and we do it a third of the time, why don't we budget thirty thousand dollars a year out of surplus every year, okay?
So you have that every three years?
So, so now this year you're gonna see a line item for, I think, I've taught, I had eighty-five thousand dollars, a transfer from overlay, it's gonna come into the operating budget, so our operating budget's eight point eight million dollars funded with tax levy, local receipts, state aid, plus a transfer of eighty-five thousand dollars in overlay, that eighty-five thousand is going to specific programs, one of which is the senior work program at fifteen thousand. So we cut that fifteen thousand, then technically I don't need to transfer that overlay surplus in anymore.
Right.
Okay? So you're right, that's off the table. The only thing you can do is you can keep that money coming in and then use it for something else tax related, but, I don't, I don't think that's appropriate at this time. I think it should come off the list.
So that puts the fifteen thousand.
So we're back at two seventy-seven.
Okay, so it puts it back.
Okay? Um.
It's just not there.
It's not, it's technically not a vi- it's not available.
It's not a cut, so that's.
In terms of asking the taxpayers to fund that program, you could do that, but we already funded from a separate resource, okay? Um, police department overtime, I think we all had police department overtime, people may have been thinking differently in terms of what that meant. I'm gonna go to the police department budget and show you where we took it. In the police department, he has these line items for overtime. So for example, uh, shift coverage, we have an officer who's on medical leave, we need someone to cover his shift, right? But in addition to covering their own shift. We have holiday pay, people get time and a half or, or whoever's off top of my head, I don't know the exact language in the contract, you get certain extra pay for working Christmas, New Year's and so, or Thanksgiving. Court, if I work a forty-hour shift and I handled an incident on Wednesday, and I'm brought into court six months later, I'm gonna do my regular shift, and then I gotta come in and go, and I gotta represent the town, okay? There's coverage for that. Um, training, outside of your regular forty-hour shift, again, we staff our levels at minimum, so they can move minimum two guys on the streets, and at certain times, three, they can't do training during that time, otherwise that means an officer off the street, so we paid an extra above and beyond to do the training. Shift extensions, I normally work seven to three, I pull someone over at ten of three, I'm there till three thirty, I'm getting paid from three to three thirty. Investigation, same thing, I'm not doing an investigation while I'm on my regular shift and patrolling the streets, I gotta do that on another time, I gotta stay longer to do that. So the only thing I thought was discretionary was the eight thousand special events. I think every, everyone else had a certain dollar amount, whether, um, John had five thousand, Gary had ten, Bo and Donnie had the eight, so. That's where, where we were targeting, again, service, I targeted the service, we targeted the service, staff and I, and we figured, okay, what does that mean to the budget? It doesn't mean anything in terms of the service level, in terms of the other services that are provided by that staff. But what it's doing is saying that we're not gonna do the above and beyond, something that's discretionary.
Mr. Chairman, maybe something, I should've asked the, the chief when he was ahead of, in front of us, but.
Here.
Okay, um, if, or you can start on it.
I'll try.
Uh, how much did we remove in our amended budget from police overtime, was it five or ten?
I think we cut five thousand dollars in, in, uh, police department's, uh, overtime, and then we cut five thousand dollars in expenses, off the top of my head.
And then overtime, can, can you point to areas where that, where we, where we lost?
Again, it's the same thing as firefighter salaries, depends on how many fires I get, depends on how many investigations we have, depends on how many, uh, does someone get sick? You, you know, if I don't, we don't carry the money, then in May, and we, and we, and we need it, then in May, I'm asking you to take free cash and balance the budget. And that's why, when we did it in, in the December, I said, listen, this is something we can do right now, we'll keep our fingers crossed to get through to May, to, to June thirtieth of this fiscal year, that helps us balance the seven hundred and one thousand dollar hit that we took in the fall. Well, I need that money, just like I need firefighter salaries, I, you know, Bob's at a point now where he's gonna come in, he's gonna ask me for more money in firefighter salaries because of the amount of fires they've had since December. That, so I'm gonna go to the well in May, and I'm gonna take that money out of free cash, and you know that the free cash is how we fund our capital, okay? So again, we can just decrease those numbers, okay, but if it's not funded through an override, what happens when I have to spend that money? You gotta take it out of free cash, and I see on a finance committee reserve, you meant, you're talking about taking money away from that too. What happens between May second and June thirtieth, and I only have five thousand dollars in fincom reserve, and I have a major fire? I need that, I need the money, I need the money to cover those services.
And if it's not used, it's, it's a giveback, and that's where it's available for other use, so do we have a history of, of, of givebacks in those categories? Cause, you know, cause it's, it's all about our.
Well, what I would say is, what I was, I mean, like, and Bob will tell you in terms of firefighter salaries, what you're gonna find is that, you know, if we average ninety-five thousand, one year you're gonna spend one ten, like we did two years ago, and we had to go to the finance committee and ask them to transfer fifteen thousand. Another year you're gonna spend eighty-two, and you got thirteen thousand left there, and it's gonna end up in free cash. Or that'll end up in free cash, but you went high somewhere else because we had to fix the elevator at the library, and that fifteen thousand that was extra in firefighters didn't really turn into free cash because you had to use it somewhere else. So, just like any organization, just like family budgets, it's, it's an estimate that you have based on historical use, based on what it costs to provide a certain service, you project that service over the next twelve months, and that's what we're carrying. So my point is that if you take away something that you feel is essential to the service and it's non-discretionary, um, you know, I'm saying stay away from it, this, um, when I went to the eight thousand, I said it was discretionary. The other, other ones aren't discretionary, you wanna lower them, is there a chance that we won't need that money? Possibly, but he's gonna, but it's, it's not gonna be like a matter of we're gonna be off by fifty grand, you know? Um, it's gonna be, you know, small numbers. But if you go over that number, which you very likely could or will based on past history, we're taking money away from free cash, which means we're not fixing something. You know, I'll, I'll go through my capital plan later, we had two million three hundred thousand dollars in requests, and we only have six hundred and seventeen. You know, I'll go through my capital plan later, we had two million three hundred thousand dollars in requests, and we only have six hundred and seventeen thousand to spend. That means I have one point seven million dollars worth of stuff that's gonna be back on the list next year, and the fire truck's one year older, et cetera, et cetera, so... Just be careful in terms of when you're talking about taking away police overtime.
Open a prayer on that number, because it could be a move, is a moving target, it depends what, what...
Well, it is, and I think everybody...
My, my thought is, and I was open that up, if you think this is essential to the service, and you want the service moving forward, and you're not willing to ask, and, and, and if you don't, it doesn't get funded, and you're gonna take it away. You know, that, that's, that's, that's one, that's a tough one to swallow. Certain departments, and just like all these other departments in Gray, work has to be done. Just because you reduce the budget, like, doesn't mean, when you reduce the staff person, doesn't mean you still have the same amount of work the next day. That's gonna happen in many cases. Police overtime is one of them. Is it better than laying off a police officer? Absolutely.
I wanted to tackle this one line while we're here.
So, that one line, I don't know, yeah, what do you guys wanna do?
Yeah, eight thousand, I'm good with eight.
Yeah, the only difference I did is I, I used two thousand more out of training, and thought there was some room there, if any place, but I, I don't have an issue with going to eight.
Yeah, we're all good with eight.
All right, I'm up to two eighty-five. Okay, um, we went through parks, went through library, went through counseling, aging, border health. It seems like the engineering aid is four out of five. John actually has it on his cut list.
Right.
And the rest of us have it on our, um, override list. So, again, this is, this is, just real quick, this is a part-time position that we have, pay him nine bucks an hour, it's usually a student that comes in and does, over the course of summer, a lot of the plan-, uh, planning, engineering work that frees up Steve to do a lot of the other work, because, because we have major construct, the only time we can do construction in this community, really, is gonna be April first and November first. So, um, during that time, it allows Steve, Evan, to be putting these jobs out to bid. Sometimes, the student can put bid packages together, um, you know, help, help in analysis of bids, um, all, all different types of things. So, Steve's here if there's any questions in terms of how essential that is.
Through the, the vice chair, I, I... Does, does a service, that, that was one that I would say, um, after we finish discussion, I, that's something I wouldn't mind, you know, talking as to whether that should be a permanent, permanent cut. Does a service go away forever with this person not being in this position?
What I would say is that, you know, Steve's got a hundred percent of his duties, is a hundred percent.
Yep.
So, now, it does, and he has a certain amount of hours to do that. And just like me, at the end of the day, he's got stuff on his table that he never even looked at. So, now, you take away someone who's providing, uh, whatever it is, a hundred and twenty hours, whatever ends up being, uh, more than that, thousand hours, or whatever it is, um, you take away that, now, Steve's gotta fit those duties, or his support staff, which may already be shorthanded, are, gotta, gotta do all that work too, the work doesn't go away. For us, this is a very cheap way to get that work done. You know, some towns have directors of operations in their military, they just hire, they just refill their director of operations. They have a smaller department than we do, and they just hired to give an assistant below the department public works, he's full-time, and he's the director of operations. He does a lot of the stuff that this person would do, or some of the stuff this person, so... Is it essential, are we still gonna be able to plow the roads? Yeah. Are we still gonna be able to police the streets and put out fires, and if this position goes away and collect taxes? Yeah, absolutely. All, like I said, but the same amount of work needs to be done.
I'd, I'll just state my position, it's, it's an, it's an area that I'm not so sure I wanna ask for permanent two-and-a-half override to fund this. And I would be upset if, if in three years, this is used to create another position. Uh, and, and, not saying you would, but it, it's, uh, I'm just uneasy with it, but, but that's just my, my opinion. Mr. Chair, just, given what we're facing, um, we, we do the best we can in, in paying our, our professional department heads, and I'm very sympathetic to the, the kind of extra mileage it gives us with, with Steve, but I just, just the, the idea of, of an aide at this, at this time, in this, in this budget, um, I just, I, I just don't think it, it fits our situation, I would be, I'm inclined to eliminate that, delete that as a, as a permanent position.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so, I'm at two eight, I was at two eighty-five with the things that are on there. Again, we're trying to work on the, on the deficit, on, that's affecting eight point eight million. So, the, uh, the eleven thousand come off of the, the five hundred ninety-five thousand dollar deficit, and then we're, so, five eighty-three, and then we're two eighty-five on our way to five eighty-three, or five eighty-four, I'm sorry, five eighty-four.
I just make sure you get, it's net, you know?
Yeah, it's a net.
It's, it's not a, it's not outage if it's, if it's not...
Well, so, so again, so that takes our deficit, oh, I'm sorry, this is the wrong number, five ninety-four. So, it takes our deficit, we currently have a deficit of six oh five, you're working on the items that you wanna ask for, and, but we're taking eleven away off of that six oh five.
So, you're five ninety-four.
You're eliminating that position in terms of being requested. So, now, you're at, um, five ninety-four. So, we're two eighty-five out of five ninety-four, okay?
Yep.
Three hundred to go.
Yep.
Wait a second, we started with five ninety-five, this is...
I'm sorry, six oh five?
Two ninety-six.
Six oh five, right, I'm sorry. Five ninety-five minus eleven, I was right, five eighty-four. So, five eighty-four, two eighty-five, that, two ninety-nine to go, okay? All right. So, we, uh, town hall, um, we went through all the different departments, this came up for discussion in the hall. This is obviously a major impact to service, um, but, uh, in times like these, it's, it's on, it's on the discussion block. So, we would talk about reducing, again, I talked about reducing town hall from being open four days plus two nights. Mondays and Tuesday nights were open. Eliminating those two nights, and then eliminating two days of being open to the public, which would essentially take all of the full-time support staff in the departments. Instead of them working four days a week plus, they would work two days a week at nineteen and a half hours. They would only be open to the public, those two days that that support staff is there, and the department head would be responsible for working the other two additional days. And I'm sure what you're gonna find if you did this, they'd be working Fridays too. The work's not gonna go away. So, we have, so again, the impact of the services, you go to pay your taxes on Wednesday, and it's, and the town hall's closed. It's not gonna happen, all right? Same thing on, you know, town clerk, you want, you wanna get a birth certificate on whatever days we choose, you wanna get a birth certificate on Thursday afternoon at five o'clock because your kid needs it for registration on soccer on Saturday morning, or we can't play, it's not gonna happen, okay? You have to plan accordingly. There's gonna be an impact to the service, okay? We can't be open, if you wanna reduce staff in this position, in these positions, in these departments, you cannot be open full-time and expect the work to be done. These department heads, you know, just, they can't do it physically.
So, so the total of your, of your gray, um, positions and, and numbers, that would bring us to two days a week? Is that, what's the total we're working with there?
I have one sixty-one.
That's what, that's what your, um, those, those six positions represent?
Correct.
One sixty-one, and that would take us to two days.
Incorporated in that is cutting the part-time position in the assessors and cutting part-time position in town clerks. In addition to reducing that full-time, so they have like one and a half, let's say?
Yeah.
One eighty-one, Ed?
You're one eighty-one.
Twenty-fourty, one oh nine.
One eighty-one.
One eighty-one.
One forty-six, yeah, one eighty-one. Yeah, you're right, one eighty-one. So, I think going across the board, there may have been different ways to get there, different folks, like, you know, Gary just had a, a, a total number, John, you had a total number, and then you went and hit a specific position. Tony, uh, looked, I think, certain positions, and, and again, and I understand targeting certain positions, you know, uh, whether filled or unfilled, or whether it's a part-timer or not, the work still needs to be done. And there's a real problem for the person left behind to try and do work. Do the window, answer the phone, do the work, uh, hit the window, do the work behind, all the other things that they need to do. It can't be done if you are at the window.
Right.
Okay, I know the town of Dully does this one day a week. They, they, I can't remember if it's Wednesdays or Thursdays, they're only open three days to the public. I think it's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, off the top of my head. And that other day, the doors are locked and closed, and the department heads are in there working.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I was gonna follow up with this, I know that the administrator wanted the numbers. I started writing, you know, verbiage as to what this did, and I was gonna tie my cuts back to a window not being open, you know? So, we're gonna get to the same answer. I, I was gonna also add services.
Try to break it through.
Yeah, the service, the services that would be impacted, but we had to get these...
And I did it just differently, I just took a, a shot at two days.
Yep.
You know, who would it affect, how would it affect, and, and I think people need to know our backs are against the wall, and this is where we're at, so...
As the administrator said, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe we're saying the same thing here. Uh, my numbers were less, but, you know, if, if...
We're all not that far off, David, no.
If you went back, cut back in years, I said, "Do it, it'd still affect the, the, the services you'd be available." You couldn't, you couldn't have the door open and, and not, not be there.
Yeah, I don't care if he calls one day a week, not two though. Take Wednesday off, that, that's fine. It used to actually be like that, afternoon time on Wednesday, after that, they would work in their offices.
So, be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, then?
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay, which is fine, but the problem, the problem is, is that you're not gonna get anywhere near the dollar amount that you need.
What do you mean?
Because, so if I have a certain person working three, seven hours...
Yeah, but your dollar amounts are all people, it's got nothing to do with how many hours is open.
Well, it's, it's a dollar amount that's tied to a position.
As far as what that position could get done in a certain amount of hours?
What it did was it took them down to nineteen and a half hours, and that's, and that's the reduction.
I know what you're saying.
So, if you wanna go up to twenty-six hours a week, or twenty-eight hours a week? Twenty-seven, three times nine.
But that's an elected office, and that's an elected office. So, you can't reduce them, so they're gonna be... Yeah, so why can't it be open on Thursday?
You mean those two, Tony?
How, let's say, you take away the support staff.
Yep.
And you want the department head to cover the window, so all the people that didn't come in on Wednesday...
I'm just asking.
Yeah, it's, it's just, you're asking, creating misery for the treasurer, I think if you, think about all the people that wanted to come on Wednesday and couldn't come, now it's a Thursday. Now, you come on Thursday, the treasurer collector's the only person there, and she's got no support staff. What's that, you know, that one, that is... Again, and, and that's a situation where you've got a certain amount of work that needs to get done, you take away people, same amount of work needs to get done, you didn't, you didn't change the service, all you did was, you know, create a bad situation for the person left behind to do the work.
So, if the treasurer's there, so you're open Monday, Wednes, Tuesday, and Thursday. Just say for sake, it's eight hours a day, just for kicks, so it's twenty-four hours. So, the treasurer's gonna put in forty, or whatever they put in. Then you have two clerks for nineteen and a half, right, so that's thirty-seven hours. So, why can't you cover?
So, you're having one day with, you're having one day with only the treasurer and one support staff.
Right.
Plus, you close down a day a week.
Right.
What I'm saying is that, that, that day that you have only one person, plus a part-timer in there, plus you have, there's more work that particular day because you're making up for the day that you were closed on that particular day. You need full support staff that day.
Can I ask you a question? It, it, it sounds like your point, but we're still going for the dollar figure, so I guess it's...
Well, just one other thing on that, is, is you would, you would open the town hall in that day and only have one house, one office open to the public? So, people are gonna come in that door, and they're gonna knock on the town clerk's office, someone's gonna be behind that window, they're not gonna be happy. Because they gotta be closed all, or nothing, that day.
I had it different, I had it getting rid of full-time, just getting rid of everybody, certain ones, instead of putting people in part-time.
But, again, I like, I know what you're trying to do, what I'd get to do is start with the service. There's a certain amount of work that needs to get done, certain amount of people or hours that need to do it, and then what's the impact? You're saying...
And, and you can still close down.
You're saying reduce fifty percent of the people, but only, but only close the service twenty-five percent. And I'm saying you can't do that.
Like, Adam, seriously, come on. I, I'm not in favor of closing two days.
That's fine, we're just gonna, let's, let's say the number is a hundred and eighty thousand, and let's just say that's two days, and one day is now, that is ninety thousand, okay?
I mean, that's me, you got four other guys. Okay, I can't do two days.
What, what positions we have unfilled right now that are, that are assumed in the budget, we have a couple of part-time positions that are...
I have a part-time position in the assessors department.
It's open.
And, yeah, and I have a full-time position in the treasurer collector's office, and we have a full-time, like, equipment operator at the highway department. So, right now, you have, in the highway department, nine guys doing ten guys' work, plus, as we mentioned, we had more than that prior. We need more roads, and you have the same amount of work. So, in that situation, same thing happened, um, someone retired, and they didn't fill the position. So, now, you're left with nine guys trying to do that amount of work.
We got, we, we held off on hiring two part-time support people in, in the assessor treasurer's office.
No.
We have one part-timer in the assessors office, seventeen thousand dollars. What we did was, we, we used a intern over the summer, and then we didn't fill the rest of that position after that. So, there's a halftime position that's open in the assessors department.
That's all, in, in the financial...
And then we have a full-time position in the treasurer collector's office, which is a different office altogether. And there's normally three full-time people in that office, we have it with two. What we've been doing is we've been, and also, keep in mind in that position, the treasurer collector, the department head in that position won't be here July one. So, now, July one, you're gonna be, if you eliminate a, a support staff, now you have a department head who could be an elected official that's never stepped in that office before, less one support person come July one.
What I, what I guess, what I'm getting at is, if for people who saw what we went through to, you know, to, to make the, the cuts to get through this last year, and, I, I wonder about... Wonder about the perception of our ability to, you know, continue that way, I mean, what, what really was, what, what, what really suffered?
We closed that window now, we closed the window now. Both offices closed the window, a lot more than they used to, in fact, the treasurer collector never used to. They closed the window. So, you come in, you come in on Wednesday, and you wanna figure out what your property tax value is, and you go to the assessors office, and there's no one there? It's closed, that's, that's what's happening now. It's not forty hours a week, but it happens now. You take away support staff, you take away...
The building's open, but the door has to be closed.
I think what people need to go, remember, when we go back to this, what happened in December, that was a band-aid, that was sticking the, the finger in the dyke, that was, you know, putting a tourniquet on, the bleeding, the bleeding doesn't go away, it's still there.
And I remember making the point, and, and you objected to this, and I, I understand that, you know, your, your role here, as I said, maybe we can learn to live without some of these things, maybe these are economies that sometimes businesses or families do, and you say, "Well, I guess we can, I guess we didn't need that as much as we, as we thought." I mean, it's, it's, it's inconvenient, it's, it's not ideal, but considering what we're facing, you know, and maybe we can, we can get on with, with that, and that's...
But why would you ask for it on the override? I, 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 all these things, that you're asking on the override here, and you're saying that it's inconvenient to go away. We're saying, "Let's take it away, well, let's make it inconvenient for the department head, and then make it inconvenient for the staff that uses it." If that's gonna be inconvenient, then ask for it on the override.
Well, that's why I had on my original, on my delete list, I had, I had a, a... I didn't know how, how it actually, actually fall in responsibility, so that's what I thought, that we might have, have, we might have a, a, a way of eliminating a, a, a position permanently.
And my concern is that with that department, you start on July one. Let's say the, we didn't, let's say, um, and that's why I went back to your list, I said, "If we weren't asked for an override, would you eliminate these things?" And I go back to that position. Why would you wanna eliminate the position if, if that work needs to be done, and on July first, the treasurer collector department head's gone, and you've got someone in there with no experience, you've got someone who's, there's someone in the office running for the position, but if they don't get in there, and someone else does, you know, why, why would you take away the position? The same work needs, needs to be done, you're just gonna make it harder for that person to do? Think about walking in as a treasurer collector on day one. We, that person handles twenty million dollars worth of stuff. Twenty million dollars worth of stuff, handles investments, handles all of our borrowing, uh, you, you know, need certifications, need support staff, needs to do a lot of different things, and now you're taking away that person's health on July one. Why would you do that? I, 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 the only way I would do that is if you were closing the building two days a week. That's why I put it, that's, then that's what I have in there. Fine, you wanna target certain positions, you think that, just because it's unfilled, I mean, doesn't, doesn't mean that, that position doesn't need to be done. What we did was we band-aided this year, used interns, have other people from other departments going up there. Uh, we used senior workers over the summer to, to, to stuff envelope, do whatever they could. The work didn't go away, we just said, "Okay, let's wait," because if we went to two days a week, okay, then I wouldn't be laying someone off, and I'd save the unemployment cost on that, okay? So, my, my recognition is, don't limit the position just because it's open, just because it's open doesn't mean we don't need it.
But I'm also looking for ways to truly to, to go forward with a, with a, with a smaller budget, that's...
Well, then, my suggestion is go somewhere else in the budget. That department needs, that department needs a support staff, that work needs to be done, we rely on... Yeah, I mean, if we don't, exactly, we rely on, right now, we budget, our budget based on a hundred, a hundred percent collections. You get rid of that per person, how does that affect your ability to collect the money that you need to fund everything else in the department? How angry are people when they come on, on Thursday when they can't pay their taxes? We need that person to come and pay their taxes, we need them to be happy that we're there, that they come, because we need that money. We need that person to come and pay their taxes, we need them to be happy that we're there, that they come, because we need that money, we rely on that money, to fund everything else in the budget. It runs with, you're gonna eliminate that sta- staff in that department by thirty-three percent? I, I, I respectfully ask you to look somewhere else in the budget. Unless you're gonna close the, the window, unless you wanna close that office two days a week, just like you would other ones. Okay, now we can talk about, we don't need someone at the window, those other two days, because it's not open two days. But you still have the work that needs to be done, the other work that needs to be done.
So you're saying with, with Donny's idea of, of holding on to, to, to three days, what are, what are we down?
Are you doing that for the whole building?
What's that?
I think Donny, Donny, uh, statement I think was for the whole building.
Whole building.
The whole building, so that's fine, we're trying to get the number, we're having a discussion, it's great. You wanna go halfway, halfway and keep it open one day, let's just look at that one hundred and eighty number and just, to make quick math, we don't have to finalize this until next Monday, I can go through it. Let's just call it ninety thousand, okay, so instead of at four sixty-six, now you're at three seventy-six. And you still have a four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar deficit.
So we're losing, with the hundred and eighty, we're losing three days.
No, one hundred and eighty is losing two days.
Two days. You're open four now.
We're open four now, I'm sorry, right, okay, ninety, gotcha, okay, I'll go forward with that.
So do you wanna do four days or, I mean, I'm sorry, do you wanna do two days or three days? Open.
I'm in favor of three.
I'm three.
And I'm at the two, so. This is such a big number that you gotta put it into everybody knows.
I agree, we may end up there, but I would just start with three.
Simple, simple question to the administrator, if, if you, uh, say we had a special day where we opened until noon, are we closed?
Can we make that?
Two and, two and a half days.
About a half a day.
A half day and close at noon.
I would just say, without me going through each and every line item, let's just apply it to the one eighty. So if one eighty is, you know, a hundred percent, and you're gonna change that to half, uh, one day, that means fifty percent, let's go to ninety. You know, if you wanna tackle that with the other math, off the top of my head, my, my head's spinning right now. Um, a quarter, I guess that would be, so four into one eighty is forty-five. Be another forty-five thousand.
Yeah, but your one eighty, if you cut down to two days, right? The other people that are in the offices are gonna be cut down, they're not getting any benefits, right?
Um, well, no, you're, you're, that, that is that, you're correct, if we go to more than two days, if we go to two and a half or three, um, that will increase your number to nineteen and a half. What I did in here, when I did this budget, was I basically netted out, you know, when you, when you take someone for full-time and the part-time, there's unemployment that there allotted. So if you're taking someone's benefits away, then I still have an expense, what I did was I, you know, I just netted those two out.
That's what I was wondering what the.
So if you, you are correct, if you wanna stay open two and a half days or three days and you push that nineteen and a half out, you're paying unemployment and you're paying benefits.
Right, I left that out.
That's why, that's another reason why it's two days.
And that's how we got to where we were, just so everybody knows, it's, it's an expense to, uh, I know it's not good, and it's, it's a horrible choice, but.
So that's, I guess what I'm saying is that ninety's not really ninety.
Right.
Because of the unemployment?
Uh, then, then I, I'm, I'm okay presenting it for two days. It's gonna be, it's gonna be real.
Not gonna be, not gonna be the right figures if it is.
To win.
So it is two right now.
I'm putting in for two, so I'm back to, we were at two eighty-five plus one eighty. It's four hundred and sixty-five thousand. We're trying to get to five eighty-four. We were at five ninety-five, we cut the eleven from the engineering aid.
Did that get added in?
No, I took it away.
Where do you at, for a number?
I'm at, uh, so I have thirty for fire department, ninety for Maple Street, four for floor area coordinator, sixty-one for parks and rec, ninety-two for library, eight for police OT. That gets me two eighty-five, one eighty for town hall closing two days a week is now four sixty-five.
Okay, that's.
Our deficit was five ninety-five, taking away eleven from the engineering aid is five eighty-four, so we're at four sixty-five on our way to five eighty-four.
Can I ask, Mr. Chairman, ask him a question? How, how does the, I, I know three out of the five, uh, on this board went with full-time positions. Are we all in agreement that's the way we'd wanna go with this, at the worst-case scenario? Or do we wanna lean towards with the administrator and save two positions and two peoples somewhat their livelihood? He was, he, for like, for, for say, the, the example on the assessors and treasurers, he's, he's going from, um, to part-time on his positions and we were eliminating a position in each, right?
I did both.
You did both.
I did both.
We shifted, if you go back to the beginning.
The treasurer's already, she's been going since December.
Well, I take back, I, I, if you go back to my list, what I did was.
Full-time.
Full-time to part-time and all these, full-time assistants, okay? And then what I did was I cut the two part-time assistants, one in the assessors and one in the clerk. What I did was I maintained a second part-time person, which is now currently full-time in the treasurer's office, so there's three, when the windows open, there's three people there.
My thinking is we put this on and something happens.
We're keeping positions for people, right?
Not really.
I, I mean. Well, I guess, I guess in fear of eliminating my staff here, it's probably already gone. Um, I mean, I'm, I'm targeting the service, I'm basically, I said this to, to the, to the highway department and and they were talking about ten people in their department and talking about which position would go.
The full-time ones aren't gonna work in two.
I, I don't look at that way, I have to look at the service. We're saying we have a particular service that we're required to provide this community in order to operate. Bare bones, core, whatever, that means I have one, I need to have a full-time town clerk, right? So, um, going through all of the departments, um, I'm looking at, you know, I'm saying in the treasure, by not eliminating that position, I'm saying I need three people at the window. There's two days and there's two part-time people there. If you eliminate the full-time person and you're only open two days, then the two days that those people are left there, there's only two.
It's not.
I need to hear that, I thought, I was hoping within the assessors and treasurers that we could. I did cut the part-time position in the assessors.
Right.
Again, so there will be, even with that position now, there, there are times where there's only two people at the window, right?
Right.
So, so does it affect the ability, does it obviously affect the ability to provide the service? Does it actually provide the ability to, to keep the window open and all of that?
Yeah.
You're not getting a disagreement there, but the bottom line, we can talk service all we want, in the end, it costs positions.
It's a cost position, absolutely.
I'm trying within, I know the service is gonna get hogged, I just wanna know if I could go get, keep part-time people and, and, uh, not eliminate full-time, but I'm okay.
So that number at one eighty is, okay.
I'm okay with your, with your numbers, I don't. I mean, I doubt the other two.
So the other way, I got the four sixty-five, which you guys didn't have, and we can talk about that, and then if you don't wanna stay away from that, then we'll talk about these other things that you guys had on the bottom that are not in color. But the one thing I had was I had, I had next was the streetlights, which is you guys don't have. So the streetlights was the way I got back up to the, to the total number essentially.
Have it in mind.
Okay, so pros and cons, obviously. I went there before I went to, uh, other positions that some of you guys chose to go, uh, highway, you guys, uh, pretty much all of you had the highway L E O, light equipment operator, um, and then you had boards, some of you had board stipends, some of you had some in stormwater, and then Tony had some, some staff in highway.
So where about?
And then there's also reduction in building inspector with Donny, so.
So where about a hundred and nineteen?
Those are the things that were a hundred.
Close the town hall two days, he's going to nineteen and a half hours, right?
So if we did that.
So what would that savings be?
Twenty grand.
It's automatic, there's no discussion, it's gonna happen.
Okay, so twenty is now.
The L E O, we all agreed on, right?
Yep.
So that's gone, so you got fifty-eight right there.
Fifty-eight, thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight plus the twenty for the building inspector, fifty-eight. Board stipends is sixty-eight. And then you didn't add the fire department, uh, stephanes, did you?
Yep, I'm sorry about that, yep.
So that's another twenty-one, so that's seventy-nine.
So, just backing up, I was at four sixty-five, twenty from the building inspector gets the forty-eighty-four, thirty-eight for the L E O.
Five twenty-three.
Which I disagreed with, but you guys all had it. And then five twenty-three plus the twenty-one or twenty-two from closing the fire department, I had twenty-two, which is now at five forty-five.
Yep.
Board stipends.
I'm okay with adding that.
That's five fifty-five.
I had, uh, yep, ten grand. Twenty-nine, twenty-nine to go.
You take twenty-five grand and out of the stormwater, you're there.
Um, do we already?
Oh, we didn't touch that.
How about the, um, fifteen in consultants, I mean, I, oh, I guess.
Didn't we do that?
Either way.
You can do, yeah, it doesn't matter.
Either way.
Well, here's one, here's my thought, is that, I mean, it's gonna come from the highway department expense budget, they have twenty-five in stormwater and fifteen in, in consultants, and I'm looking at John's, this is forty. I need twenty-nine, so do I cut that expense budget by twenty-nine?
Sidewalks out of there.
Sidewalks is in the two, so I'm gonna cut twenty-nine thousand dollars out of the expense budget for the highway department, which is gonna affect sidewalk, stormwater, consultants in some way.
Yeah.
Something, some, something's gonna get short.
Cut a little bit of each.
I'm at five eighty-four.
So.
Doesn't matter the break up.
Discussion.
Okay.
I, I, I was, I was, I, I was trying to keep to the forty, this is, this was, I was not thinking thirty-two here.
Which one, John? Oh, on the hours, you mean?
I was trying to, to, I, I, a different vision of what was happening.
Based on, based on everything we've been through, um, that was the last, right? Is, is that twenty-nine?
Yep.
So go with that.
All right, so before I move on to the next thing, the next thing I had, um, can I ask, can I ask the board, um, and I probably go back to the, to the library staff. If, if we, on the library staff, if you've lost the clerical position and, um, say the, the children's associate, a library associate, do those services, could you creatively work out security issues in the services that were offered by those positions?
All right, let me be clear, what, what your proposal is.
The eleven.
Seven positions is what is on the board, you're saying not seven positions?
Right.
Because they, they were included in those seven positions.
Well, what, what he's saying is, he wants to know if we can reduce our deficit by eliminating a position before we even talk about the override. How would that affect your department if we cut?
No, no, please, I understand, I think most of us, when we did our presentation, you're really clear. We're already, um, at the very edge of what we can do to keep the doors open. In fact, I'm very concerned as time goes on that what's happening is some of us have to donate a lot of time and we have lives. We can't always do that, so, um, I don't have anyone that I, that wouldn't be affected. I understand that you're saying that, um, well, maybe we have something discretionary, uh, it's, it's really not. Um, are you saying the?
How does it affect the service?
If you're talking about the, the children's room assistant, basically I'd have to close children's room sometimes, because that's all I have. If you're saying, what was the other positions?
The clerical, library associate, clerical.
The clerical, um, I guess I'd do the bills.
So what you're saying is that you, you're looking at if you could reduce the override number by taking that?
Right, as, as I did with the highway, I was in every department.
Right.
As, as, as I hit them, I was looking at every department and, and that was the only other question I had left was, you know, what could we do to, to, um, I know we have to save positions there, I know, I know we do. I'm just trying to manage the override as well. And that's where I was coming from, I'm not, not a fool for five thousand.
That one concern I have, and I know the department has that as well, and Paul mentioned this for the highway department, once it goes away, it's never coming back. We're gonna be back here in five years from now, we're gonna be, or the last from now, we're gonna look at one of these other positions.
You, you guys have more experience than me, but I, I will never agree a hundred percent with that paradigm. I mean, that's, that's the problem with, with municipalities, I mean, I, I, I would have no problem at some point if our services were decimated, putting back thirty-eight thousand dollars. I, but, you know, we're at a, we're at a, a time now where we're hitting the, the, the taxpayers all over the place.
And, and you're right, and that's exactly what's happening, but I think you also have to send a message, you know, it is, is pried up till now. We as a board and we as a town have narrowed down as much as we can to where we're at a point where virtually shut down.
Let me just say one thing on that, Tony, I, no disrespect, I appreciate what you're saying and I, I appreciate you saying that. And how many years you've been here have we added to the highway department workforce?
We haven't.
And, and the police department, we've never added, we haven't added one position in that department in the last eighteen years. It's not gonna happen, and you can say you want to, but it's not gonna happen, in my opinion.
That's not true, Adam, because we were gonna add a cop this year if the school thing had happened, and you know that, so don't say.
Well, I, I, I just want to say, you know, no disrespect to our administrator, he's been, I'm sorry.
No, no, you do a great job, don't, don't say, because you know that's not true.
And, and I'm not sitting here, I don't have a vendetta against anybody, I'm just trying to serve everyone here. But you, I, I, it's just a question I have, I'm okay with putting, I wanna save the service, so I'm okay with it. I just wouldn't feel good if I didn't question.
And I think, I think it gets up to all of us to question everything that we're doing, I think they, and, and I think, you know, Donny's right in that respect. You know, if we had our way, you know, is the light equipment operator where they're already been filled, um, and we can't control what was thrown at us.
Listen, three, oh, six years ago, you guys weren't all here. We took a one point two million dollar hit on state A B. We didn't lose one position, we consolidated some, we did regionalization, you guys are on board for some of that. All the employees, a lot of them took wage freezes, wage deferments, we're the only town I know that is sixty-fourty on air insurance, it's the only one I know. I, I don't think we're asking for a lot, you know what I mean? I mean, we've cut a lot, that's why our audits have zero issues. And we all know, what do you call it, the white outfit in the room? All this money is the schools, unfortunately, we can't pass this around to them. I wish we could, because I would, but we can't, because the state ordered us, we have to pay this. So, if, if, if we didn't have to, we wouldn't be here, our budget would be out of balance. So, I'm not in favor of lowering the override to get rid of positions, we've already done all that, over, over six years.
This is the end of the ride.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just add to, to Tony's comments, I, I, I don't accept that, that premise either, that if you cut now, you will never see them again. This is where I think there's a real, real disconnection between the, where the, the, where the public sees our role in, in, and, 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 and how they have to operate in their own businesses. I, 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 you know, I to- totally accept the parallel, you know, we have to act like a, you know, sit like a family around the table and decide what to cut. Nor do I think you can compare us a hundred percent to a business because we're doing stuff that's not profitable or doing stuff that, that's, that's, that's comes from above mandates and things like that. But I do think that, that we need to, to show that we understand the, the connection between revenue and, and, and services, between the revenues and, and the products we can produce. And that's why I wanted to start with, with, with taking a, a harder look at, at the operating budget before we applied the override. Because I think it, it's, I mean, if, if I can, if I'm still on this board, when times improve, when revenue, when revenue goes up and we see more growth, I mean, I, I would go back to any of these issues and, and add them. So I, I, I don't think it's, it's saying goodbye forever to a position, and that's why I'm more inclined to look a little, look a little, you know, closely at what we have right now to, to get us, to get us through this budget and to find an override that people can, can swallow.
Mr. Chairman, I, I ask my question, I'm, I'm going to trust our staff that we're, we have those issues, so I'm okay with the, the number that I have in there. There is, there is a twenty thou, there's a twenty thousand dollar difference between my number and, and Bo and, and, uh.
Donny's.
Donny's, say your name, Donny, so.
I'll help you.
Yeah, what, yeah, so I don't know what, I don't know what that is.
Can you repeat that?
Is, Donny and Bo have a hundred and ten, I have ninety-one, ninety, we better reconcile that amount.
In terms of, in terms of. Yeah, mine was, I was taking, I, I couldn't remember if she said she needed two part-timers or one, because I have only one.
That's why I built up, instead of using everyone's number, that's why we built up.
And that's what I did when I did my number.
Because everybody was different on the board, you know, I, you're right, I was six oh five, you know, you may guess I was six and John was orange.
I was forty-five, again, because I anticipated some, some, some cuts starting out and then working with a, with a lower number. I was forty-five, again, because I anticipated some, some, some cuts starting out and then working with a, with a, with a lower number.
I, it's, uh, and, and I wish, you know, you weren't here, John, but I'm gonna tell you. Last week, I read a letter that was written in two thousand and three stating that every department head had to come and defend their budget. Two thousand and three, okay? It hasn't changed. I mean, and when I say we're against the wall, listen, let's not whitewash it, guys. This is, this is true facts. This is what took months of, ha- department heads putting their budget out there. I mean, and to say that, you know, and I'll look at the Donnie, I mean, but.
No, you're right, no, you're right.
That was eleven years ago and we're still talking about it, so come on.
Yeah, and just to, just to add to that, and John, I was thinking about that, what you're saying, that, that we need to show. There's people in this room that have been here for thirty years and tell you they've been showing it for thirty years. There's, there's people that were full-time, lost Fridays and all those things, um, lost staff and never got them back. You know, they were always the ones to move in certain, certain areas when other departments or up the street may not have had to and they did. And I heard that from the outgoing town clerk, for thirty years, I've been watching the same thing. Um, I, you know, I think we've done a great job over the last five years showing the town and the public all the things that these employees are willing to do, all the things that these department heads do, the amount of grants that they get, amount of people that donate time, department head or volunteer, um, and I think everybody knows and I appreciate the board's support. We're at a point now where we can't go any lower than what we were at. So, I appreciate the board stepping up and putting these numbers down. I appreciate all the staff and all the hard work that they did. Um, we don't take this lightly. I don't take this lightly and I know, and I know most of the people in the room know that. Um, this is about as tough as it gets from, from this, sitting in this, this position and this role. So, I just hope, hope the town supports us.
Well, and, and I, I take nothing away from the town employees. I said, but we've also got, you know, voters and families, residents who are hurting too. And this is, this is not gonna fall easily on people.
You're right.
Alright, so this is what the que- a question would look like and I will make some minor changes, but I think I've pretty much got it ninety percent right. So, when you do a question, this is the point I was trying to make last week, and John, you weren't here, that you can't just put a question that says, shall the town's expenses be allowed to assess an additional five-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand real estate property taxes for the purposes of funding general government services? You know, do you have to provide specific items?
Interesting.
Which people don't take overrides lightly when they go to the voter box. I wanna know, if I don't vote on this, how's it gonna affect me tomorrow? And that's why these things, uh, are on here this way and that's why they're described this way. This cuts it to core for us, okay? So, this would be on the ballot, a question that would look like this, but the breakdown is not allowed, or the state law to be on there, okay? Um, so we can have information that clarifies, provides a little more detail. Um, and, uh, working with the AG's office in terms of exactly what we can say in terms of documents and information we put out there.
Think it'd be a handout.
But we can't promote, obviously, these things. Uh, we can just have, someone comes to the window and says, okay, what is a hundred and five thousand, which actually is not, should say ninety thousand now. Out of the ninety thousand on the council and agent, what does that mean? Then we can provide information that says, well, that was the operating budget that we had incorporated into the budget for Maple Street Schools and Senior Center. Okay, so we can clarify that. But, you know, we can't come out and put signs up on department walls and, and sheets out on, that says vote yes on question one or whatever, you know, stuff like that. Understood?
Is, is, was this a complete listing and the, all these numbers are gonna add up to the, to the total?
This is my take before I walked into the room at what five ninety-five would look like, okay? You guys, through the process tonight, that number now can say five eighty-four and the dollar amounts on the bottom might change a little bit.
Where, where do board stipends show up in that?
It doesn't, cause it wasn't on my list.
Right.
Oh, not on your list.
What I need to do now, John.
This to show a question how it would look.
I need to, I need to go back.
Okay, I, I forgot that it wasn't on your.
So, tomorrow morning, I'm gonna go and I'm gonna edit this and I'll have it ready for you for next Monday for voting. That will include the numbers that you added tonight.
But this is so you can see what the question's gonna break down.
But a little total that.
Right.
It has to total by law.
I think it's different.
Alright, so then you guys asked me this question last week and I provided it now. Thank you Professor for helping me out. What the rate, tax rate impact is, okay? So, we could do like we did last year. We had a flyer that was handed out at town meeting and basically incorporated all of these things. So, that the, um. So, the tax rate impact, our current tax rate is thirteen dollars and fifteen cents per thousand. That's the mill rate. Our town override of five ninety-four, which now would go down slightly to five eighty-four, would be somewhere between sixty and sixty-four cents, let's say, on the tax rate, closer to sixty-four. Um, thus you'd have a new rate of thirteen seventy-nine. School override of five thirty-eight is fifty-eight cents on the tax rate, new rate of thirteen seventy-three. Combined, there would be one dollar and twenty-two cents on the tax rate. That is the, was originally to fund a one million, one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollar deficit, which is now one million, one-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand after the cut tonight. So, the impact on the average tax bill, you can see the home values, two hundred, two and a quarter, two fifty, two seventy-five, three hundred. Our average is somewhere between two hundred and two twenty-five. You're talking about one twenty-eight to one forty-four on your average tax bill. And then for the schools, you can see the numbers there, two-one sixteen and one thirty-one on the average home. Combined, you're talking somewhere between two hundred and forty-four and two hundred and seventy-five dollars on your average tax bill. Questions on that?
That's the number we wanted.
So, just to tell, it'll be like two seventy-five a week, right? One forty, yeah. So. Two dollars and seventy-five cents.
Alright.
Okay.
And the last thing I had was the capital sheet. So, we had twenty-plus items that went before the capital planning committee. Um, everything ranging from, uh, actually, these are, these are ranked in order, but, uh, in terms of the capital committee ranking, which Tony Pepe's left, and Pepe sits on. Uh, community-wide radio system for the fire department, engine three, which is twenty-plus years old, the boiler and, and removal of the tank here at town hall. Sewer department improvements adding to their budget. Salt storage shed, which has been on there a couple of years, the pump card reader at the highway department, which we funded in, in last May and then took away in July. Highway garage roofing windows. Capital efficiency plan, which is the water department using retained earnings to target, the cruiser. Uh, twenty percent of the, of ma- uh, a matching component for repairs at the rail trail by the parks and rec. Fire station renovations design, scanner fingerprint device at the police department. Other items that include parks and rec, the used excavator, which we, again, the used excavator we funded in last May. The library film, microfilm, fish reader refunded last May and then we took that away in July. So, we have, we had eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in free cash certified, which is just a little bit above our average in the fall. We usually use all that money to fund capital projects and to balance the existing ca- uh, fiscal year in May. In the fall, we took four hundred thousand of that eight fifty and applied that to the seven-hundred-and-one thousand dollar deficit related to the school award. Okay? We also funded twenty-five thousand dollars in turnout gear for the fire department. So, four twenty-five off of eight twenty-five, four twenty-five. I have, um, I'm sorry, yeah.
Four twenty-five.
And then we have two hundred thousand dollars in free cash being applied to snow and ice. And then some other miscellaneous items, which I don't, off the top of my head right now. So, our balance for free cash left over for capital is two forty-two. I think it was eight seventy-five, just on, running back in my head, eight seventy-five minus the four, the four twenty-five used in the fall, that's, we need four fifty now. Two hundred for the snow and ice, leaves us two fifty. And then I have like eight thousand dollars here. I think it was the parks and rec, um, program to balance them. And I have a thousand dollar shortfall in general liability insurance, cause I had to take on Maple Street School. So, we have two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand for your capital plan. So, what I did was, we had three thousand dollars for our stair treads that we approved last year, as replacing the surfaces and all the stair treads around here. Um, I'm short a thousand dollars, so I can't really use that money. It's just sitting there until I get, the, the budget came in at thirty-seven hundred when we actually, you know, got an up-to-date quote. So, um, I'd like to get that done. So, that's a thousand dollars out of that two forty-two. Then I have a hundred and twenty-five targeting the boiler and removal of the oil tank. And then whatever's left is one sixteen. The highest priority that we have right now, that we've already used a hundred and seventy-five thousand towards updating the police radios. And if you ask the officers, they'll say it's the best thing since sliced bread. They've come into my office and said so. Community-wide radio system is the number one target. Four oh nine, it's a very large number. My suggestion was taking the one sixteen, applying it to that like we did with the annex. The next step is getting the highway radios and the fire department radios and outfitting all of the different sites that we have in town for the radio system. Okay, if you have any specific questions, the fire chief is here about that. He presented at the capital committee this year and he presented, presented capital committee last year. And I believe he was in front of the voters selecting last spring, about a year ago at this time, and we put this on the capital plan for the one seventy-five. So, that was my suggestion, taking a one sixteen, putting that in account, coming back in the fall, seeing what our cert- free cash certification looks like then. Maybe applying some more to that and then he can start piecemealing, you know, maybe get one of the sites done. Maybe get some of the radios for the highway, whatever. Um, this four hundred and ninety thousand, I think if we sit on that number and wait for us to have four hundred and nine thousand in our capital budget to apply to it, just like the salt storage shed, which has been four fifty, we're never gonna get there. The only way to do it is to start throwing money into an account and building it up and doing it over time. It's the number one priority. Are these other things, aren't they important? Absolutely. Um, you have, we have until next week to, to finalize the warrant, so you can sit on this. I know it's the first time you've seen this. You can sit on this for a week. We can come back next week.
I'm sorry, you've been asleep last week.
I think the boiler was something that we talked about as a priority. We saw the breakdowns this year and, and Bo was certainly a part of, part of helping us out with that. The four hundred thousand dollars for the fired engine, number three, I think the only way you're gonna fund that is through debt exclusion and I think there's not an appetite for debt exclusion at this time now. So, we're back here next year with that on the list and it could be four twenty-five asking for a debt exclusion, whatever. At some point, we're gonna have to target that.
I was talking to Adam earlier. I think what happened last year, that we should put all this in stabilization or some account to, to build. Cause we can't leave it free cash.
Right.
Yeah, if you do, if you do nothing with this money, it will roll in, it goes away, such as it'll, it'll, it will show up in our free cash in October.
Right.
But it's not like it goes away and now you have a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars to use.
Right.
It will either add to a number.
Yeah, that total.
Or will help us get to a number in October.
I, I might do that thousand dollars since that's project set, but I would put the rest away. Cause you don't know if, if we go to a district meeting again and you get.
I think Donnie's thinking is that.
There's no money this year to put towards the budget.
The override fails in May.
Even, even if the override passes, say the override passes in May and the school one goes down and we go all the way to a district meeting and the state.
That's what I'm talking about.
And the state comes in and says, you owe another four hundred.
Right.
Where are you getting that?
I, I, that's what I meant.
You have a special town meeting, people getting laid off.
And I don't think we can chance it.
It'd be nice to have a couple hundred grand in case.
That's, that's what I meant by override.
If not, you could always use it as a special time meeting in the fall and do these things.
And fund them.
Well, the only way you're gonna be able to use this, uh, specific one sixteen in the fall, special time is if you put away in stabilization now, two-thirds to go in and then in the fall, you take it two-thirds to go out, okay? Um, or you just leave it in there and it rolls over. Let's say we have four hundred thousand in free cash, come October, now we're gonna end up with five sixteen.
Yeah, yeah, either way.
Right, either way, it's the same.
Use it next October, either way.
Right.
So, what's, you're talking about the, the money that we're putting aside for radios?
I'm talking about the very top line, number one.
Top three.
What's the status of radios now? We, we've begun to purchase some, the police have them?
We, 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 right, we have.
Police already have those.
We've targeted the police with a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Okay.
Now we have the fire department, plus outfitting different sites with different equipment. Bob can tell you why, but I think it's actually C R four minutes and Boris here, Bob's in the back. Any questions?
Those, old radios and new radios can talk to each other? Is that, it?
No.
Or not?
No.
Give me the, give us the.
Correct. Currently, right now, we cannot talk to the police department. Uh, they're operating on high band, we're operating on low band. Both on low band, they're in a forty-five meter spread, we're in a thirty-three, we still couldn't talk. So, it's part of the community-wide, um, blue ribbon committee after the water emergency. Those were one of the things that we got faulted on, that none of the departments in town could talk to each other. So, this whole project has been done to try and, you know, put all these departments on the same V H F platform so the highway can talk to the police, we can talk to the police. And sewer, water, water health, everybody could be on the same platform.
So, what would happen in the case of, of an emergency now? How, would there be some intermediary communication?
We'd have to call a dispatcher, ask the attorney, call, uh, call the police department. If they're busy getting multiple nine-one-one calls and aren't answering us. Or we could actually quickly go to them, it would be, you know, talk directly would be the best communication.
But right now.
Only one dispatcher on staff.
Right now, you relay through the dispatcher.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to.
If that person's on a call, they're not answering and relaying.
I have to say, you know, I agree that I hate to spend this money now, cause God knows what's gonna happen to us, you know, down the road. I, I think the best thing is to, uh, hang on right now.
You have to know next week, right?
Hang, hang on, how do you mean that, Gary? Hang on to what, hang on to what, what Adam has proposed here or, or hold off?
Hold on to the money right now.
What, what if you get, you got to hold the school, not three hundred thousand, you gotta cope with it. We don't have the eight hundred this year.
Oh, I, I agree, just, just it's kind of ironic, we, we, we were all in agreement that thirty thousand dollars was a necessary addition to the budget, an already tight budget for training. And this is a pretty fundamental aspect of, of, you know, emergency response and public safety, which was. So, I'm, that makes me very nervous when they have a system like that, that's, that's not.
I don't think.
But even this hundred sixteen is not gonna, is not gonna complete the whole circle.
No, not at all, but it, it, it's. They're tough choices. I think, well, we'll discuss it next week. You'll give everybody a chance to look over.
One more question, Mr. Chairman. Just, Adam, since the resurfacing is only a thousand, why don't we?
Thousand more, I'm adding a thousand.
Cause it's already.
Actually, I have three thousand, we approved three thousand last year.
It wasn't.
When we had a quote. And where our num- the number went up. So, up to thirty, I think it's like thirty-six and change. And I just wanted to see it a little bit in case of a change order, so.
I guess my point is, why isn't that money being directed to, to the operating budget where those kinds of numbers are?
They're used, this is all one-time capital money, you wouldn't take.
Well, I, I thought there was a, a, there was a, a, a dollar amount that we needed to succeed or not necessarily. We can call a thousand, we can cover a thousand dollar capital expense.
It's in addition to.
It's ten thousand.
You're not a, you are not a.
Without a vote of the capital.
Example, we got audited a couple of years ago. There was a finding in our audit, because the D P W director, the superintendent, UNF superintendent at the time, bought a fifty thousand dollar truck. And then out of his operating budget, spent, say, five grand on outfitting the truck with equipment. You're not allowed to do that. If you, if you wanna fund a capital item, you need to go ask the voters for the money.
But, but I thought there was a minimum, uh, amount.
I know, the ten thousand is cap, once you hit ten, you need capital.
This, this, if you look all the way in the bottom left, there's no ranking required by the capital committee. However, we can still spend money under ten thousand without a capital committee ranking.
Okay.
So, I still, in here, that money's gotta come from somewhere. That's why I do the sheet, even for items that haven't been voted on, because it's coming out of an available resource, which is the free cash.
And this is being added to a, an amount?
Three thousand dollars on account right now, that we voted on last year.
And we're a little short due to the project.
And the quote after the town meeting came in, when we went to do it, was at thirty-six hundred.
It was six hundred dollar short, so he's put a thousand.
I don't remember exactly why.
Before it got called capital, but if, if you're.
It's been sitting there since last May.
Okay.
So, this will allow us to get it done.
Okay.
I, I have one, one question real quick, uh, Mr. Chairman. Twenty-five thousand for the underground boiler, uh, oil tank, that has to get done this year?
Within, in terms of code, it's twelve months.
Right.
Yeah, it's twelve months after you stop using it, has to come out of the ground.
Okay.
Maybe you're still using it.
Huh?
I say using it, right?
No, no, once we get done, we're gonna.
We convert the gas.
No, but currently, it's, it's an active tank.
We use it now, right? If we convert the gas within twelve months.
Yeah, twelve months to get it out. Let me know when they're here.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make no secret, uh, my desire to bridge, to make an effort to bridge the gap with our, our partners and, and the school committee by seeing if we had any free cash over to buy, like, buy them books or something. But I, I'm disappointed to see that we're right at the, the capital purchase for the free cash, so.
Exactly. That being said.
The winner's certainly hurt us. I think it hurt all, all towns, but, you know, it, it took away fifty percent, almost fifty percent of what we had left for our capital program.
So, any state kickbacks on it? No, no word, no bills, nothing? I, I haven't heard of it.
No state of emergencies.
No, but sometimes if it's high, they'll, they'll.
I think what I, I remember in the last couple of years when it's happened, or the previous storm when it happened, it went to the state, not to the towns. And they pa- applied for relief from federal government and it came to the state, the state highways. Didn't, it didn't come back down to the town for local roads.
So, you know where we're going with this? You're gonna finalize. So, you know where we're going with this? You're gonna finalize yours for next week, right?
Well, yeah, essentially, I'm just gonna take off this, and I'm gonna add an article on the town any warrant to transfer it into stabilization.
Yep. My pleasure, it's a pleasure of the boys.
Or just let it roll over, are you gonna confuse people?
Confuse them now, put the stabilization, and you'll be all set.
No, if he, you can, if he keeps it, then when your free cash is certified in October, then that'll just get added to it.
That'll be part of it.
No, we know that, we know that.
It's easier to use.
Retain, that's the same thing with retainers, water and sewer department, that's what they do now. They don't have stabilization accounts.
And then say, so say--
We'll discuss that next week.
Say by chance the school override passes, and they're all set.
So, leave that lie.
In your next special town meeting, you can, you can use--
Well, you know, just like last year, there's a bunch of things that happened after May, and before our special town meeting in the fall. We had, you know, the override in May, we had a special town meeting in July, we had another override in September, we had the district-wide meeting in October, and then we came down to a special town meeting, which was December 5th, I think. So, a lot can happen that this money could be useful. That wouldn't, otherwise, you'd be making a cut in the budget.
So, if that turns out, that money is not used for an emergency situation like Donnie's describing, that can come out and go toward radios and--
Here's what I would say, this next year in the fall, in October--
That would be--
We're gonna get free cash certified from the Department of Revenue, and there'll be a number that will include this, if you don't do anything with it.
Okay. Any other questions?
So, Mr. Chairman, the administrative particulars, you've got your number on the override, okay?
And he'll bring that next week, so we'll have that.
Yeah, just in summary, for those folks to watch at home, and remind myself. So, we went through the budget update, I explained how we got to 1,133,109 deficit. We talked about the two questions versus one, and unanimous consensus to go for the two questions. Went through the matrix, got to a point where we had made one cut, and then reduced the override amount to 584,000. And then I went over the tax rate impacts, and the impact on the average tax bill, showed you an example of what the question would look like for the town, and the last thing we just went through was the capital plan, and that's it.
That's it?
Yep.